Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to an end. Our first item of business is being resolved. The board supervisors hereby interested in the work session for the purpose of discussing the following FY 2015-2016 proposed budget to Shawsville Middle School Fields. Do you have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second would be clerk, please call your own. Call your own clerk. Supervisor Creed.
Aye.
Supervisor King.
Aye.
Supervisor Biggs.
Aye.
Supervisor Perkins.
Aye.
Supervisor Chuck.
Aye.
Supervisor Gabriel. To go into work session?
Yes.
Chip Graham.
Aye.
Seven a.m., we're in work session. Good evening, folks. Appreciate everybody coming together tonight to cover a couple of topics we thought we'd do this tonight, to maybe not bog down the board meeting that we have coming up the following Monday. First item of business is an update on the fiscal year 2016 proposed budget. We wanted to talk to you about a couple of issues as a follow-up from the presentation from last week. And I believe Mark's going to handle that, so Mark, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Okay. I wanted to talk a little bit about the budget. You've had about a week to look at the budget, and there's a lot of information to digest. So I wanted to highlight a few things that we actually have in the budget, a few things that are not in the budget, and sort of clarify some issues that are going on there. First thing I want to talk about is state funds that we included in the proposed budget. The General Assembly Conference Report came out in the last week while we were preparing the budget document. So there were a few things that we were able to get in the proposed document, and there were a few things that we were not able to get in there, and that was due to information that we didn't have at the time that the conference report came out. So I want to talk about state funds that are actually in the proposed budget, and things that we included based on the conference report. The state flexible cuts, which we've talked about in the past, were restored. That was $159,844,000. Of that amount, around $98,000 in additional revenue was included in the budget. And the reason there's a difference between the 98 and the 159 is that there are certain dollars that are for entities that are outside the general fund budget, such as juvenile detention home, there's state recognition revenues that affect the schools, and then there's CSA, which is a some sufficient program. So we netted those off of the difference, and that's why only $98,000 was added back. And then there were some additional changes for locally-supported state employees, which was a 2% compensation increase that was for 10 months and is effective September 1, 2015. So that added an additional $88,000, almost $89,000, to help support the budget going forward. Now I'll talk a little bit about the school revenues, and these revenues were actually not included in the proposed budget. And the reason for that was we didn't have the exact number at the time that we were putting the budget document together. So instead of trying to estimate what it was going to be, we were just going to wait and then adjust that after the fact. So let's talk about what was in the proposed budget for the schools and state revenues. It was $64,000 in new state revenues, and then an additional $213,000 for the E Backpack Program. So the total amount of state revenues was $277,000. The state budget changes that I just talked about that came through the conference report, $445,000 in additional state monies have come forward at this point. They were not included in the proposed budget. So when we add those to what was in the proposed budget, you have $722,000 in new state revenues for the schools. So if we look at the amount of money that we have included on the county side, which is just under $2 million, plus the state $722,000, you're looking at a total increase in new school funds of about $2.7 million. Those are the changes with regard to revenue in the proposed budget.
Mark, we want to stop there for a minute. Are there any questions about the numbers that Mark has presented so far? Back to my backup one slide, just because that's a good summary of the additional revenues that...
You know those revenues for the compensation increases for locally-supported state employees? Who are those employees?
They are primarily the Commissioner of Revenue, the Treasurer, Sheriff's Office, Commonwealth Attorney, and the Clerk of the Circuit.
Okay, so the constitutional officers.
Constitutional officers.
As far as you indicated, as far as the compensation, is that when we factor in a 2%, we were talking about a 2% raise potentially for our county employees, would we then be able to use these funds instead of using all local funds to...
Right, this is just revenue for us. And so, in other words, the starting salaries for all the positions that are listed by the compensation board are significantly below what the county pays. So any increase in revenue that we receive by the state is just general fund revenue to us. So that goes into the general county coffers and then to support other things.
Thank you. That is a good point, because that's created some questions in the past, because when some of the constitutional officers, employees see that, there's an assumption that that's going to go straight through to them. But because they're on the county's pay plan, we already pay them significantly more than the comp board position.
This $213,600 for E Backpack Program, is that already in our budget?
Yes.
So that's not been made from the state?
Well, it's new money from the state, and the schools can answer that better than I can. But my understanding was last year there was an option of whether or not they were going to do that program, and I believe they did include that program. And so this year, it's not necessarily new state money in that they can use it for anything. They still have to use it for that E Backpack Program.
It's included in that budget, right? Instead of proposed budget, it's included in the...
Thank you, Mark.
All right, the second topic we're going to talk a little bit about is the temporary position for proration. Do you remember back in February, the Commissioner of Revenue came and spoke to you about the proration of personal property, motor vehicles? And at that time, you guys discussed about adding a full-time position on a temporary basis to analyze the fiscal impact of going to proration. We did not include a position in the proposed budget because there's a very short timeframe for us to address this issue, and we needed to have complete data to really have an understanding of the financial viability of going towards proration. And so we thought it would be better to start this process immediately rather than waiting until July to address the issue. Talk a little bit about the timeframe for adopting the ordinance, if we want to go to proration. October 26, we'd have to schedule a public hearing. On November 23, we would hold the public hearing. December 14, we would approve the ordinance. And then on January 1 of 2016 will become your effective date for going to proration. We will include an appropriation resolution at your next meeting on March 23 if the board would choose to move forward with funding a position for proration.
Excuse me, Mark, but you don't... How much would this position cost?
All right, I'm getting right to it.
Oh.
All right. So for a full-time temporary position, this would be with no benefits. It could be funded immediately, and it would be terminated on November 30, 2015, which would provide eight months' worth of data. The cost of that position would be $20,000, just slightly over $20,000. What you guys would want to see in September, the Commissioner would need to provide you with a fiscal impact analysis of the viability of going to proration, including an estimate for the ongoing revenue going forward. And then if the ongoing revenues exceed the cost and the board wishes to pursue proration, then the temporary position could be funded on a permanent basis, and then we would include that in the fiscal year '17 budget. With that, that concludes the topics that I had. If you have any questions, I know you've only had a week to really look at the budget, but if you have any general questions about the budget, I'll be happy to answer them.
Has anyone taken a look at D-Dot, not D-Dot, at the DMV about what they might be charging us to collect those taxes rather than... I know they already have several things, the stickers, and it's all, they know what kind of car is going on, all they have to do is go on the NATA book on it.
They've got the statutory authority to collect properties.
Or would they, would the state...
No, they don't have the authority, they don't have the statutory authority to collect local revenues. They can collect state revenues, but they don't collect... And then over the years, they've reduced the number of positions that they have. That's the reason why you go out there and even, I mean, just temporarily just looking at this on a local office here.
I just knew they were doing some things that we used to do, or turn any ground.
I have one question. Did the Human Relations Council not get in their request in time?
They did not. We contacted them several times, and we did not receive a request from them.
Okay, because I gave them the information back.
Yeah, and we sent them several emails, and they just never responded.
All right, I'll try to see what happened. Thanks.
And I've only had a little bit of time. I was going through the sheriff's compensation. One of the things I've been talking about is potentially utilizing inmates to help with maintenance in regards to parks and wrecking the light and trails. Sorry. And I've got an ear infection, so I'm trying, I can't really hear very well out of one ear, but I've been looking at that. I did not see that in the budget as far as a new expenditure. Is that part of the sheriff's department? Was there some discussion? And perhaps that didn't make it into the budget? And if so, is there a possibility we could take a look to see how much that might cost? I know that there was some more initial costs about buying some equipment for the inmates that they would have to use in the light. But did it just not make it into the proposed budget because of so many other additional requests?
I believe that's correct.
I didn't receive a request for that from the sheriff's office in particular, so this is the first I've heard of it.
Okay. I might need to, and it may have not made it through the channels or not, but one of the things I would be interested in is looking at the cost of that. Folks don't know either, and have folks who haven't necessarily been convicted of a crime, they're just not paying their child support so they get incarcerated. So while that is a fair-to-bet court order, they have no crimes necessarily, it's a civil matter. And so if we can utilize those, I keep seeing the folks, I was over in Giles today, watching them clean up around the courthouse and the inmate labor there, and I keep thinking, can't we do some of the same things that they're doing?
No questions, comments?
I got one. Back when it's a full-time, part-time person, if you should have had numbers by November, if it's going to work out or not, that career. That's the hope. So I just wondered, if it did work out before November, if we knowed it was going to work out, we just want to go back round? Is there any way, if they wanted to keep this person, we wouldn't have to cut their job, just let them continue on?
I think we'll be analyzing the information as that person comes on board, so if it comes clear earlier than that, then definitely makes sense to proceed.
Sure. Absolutely.
And to add a comment, I had a conversation with Mr. Shelton last week, and he had heard about proration, and he was talking maybe that maybe he might need two additional positions. But I think he's on the agenda for the 23rd to come and talk to us, I guess probably about the impact on his office of proration.
One thing, Mr. Chair, we would be looking for is consensus to, if the board is willing to do that, consensus to have on next week's agenda, a resolution to provide the funding that Mark mentioned earlier to kick this position off. And again, it's not guaranteeing a position long-term. It's funding it on a temporary basis until we have more information to determine whether it's a viable project to continue.
And I know we didn't have exact revenues, but the revenue productions would, you know, be 10 times at least, was one of the numbers I heard kicked around this position, so I think it's money well spent, potentially.
And I think too, we kick it off, but we look at the total cost, and the total cost may include this position becoming full-time and also a position in the Treasurer's Office full-time according to Mr. Shelton, he might need two positions. But when you total up all that impact with fringe benefits and everything, and you look at what it's going to bring in, if it's not, if it's a wash, then do it. Yeah. But if you want to make some additional revenue, then you do it. So I think that we have to wait and really be sure, look at the numbers, and I don't know what Mr. Shelton's going to say to us on our next meeting on Monday.
Well, the other cost is proration goes both ways. If somebody, you know, right now, we pay our tax, if we own the car in January 1, we pay full rate. But then if they sell it on January 3, then we owe them proration back. So it works both ways. You get new cars getting in, but you also have to pay for the ones that have sold.
So currently, we're not sending the refunds back.
No, no.
But if we move to proration, we'll be...
We will have to. So it goes both ways. So if you get more to come in than leave, then...
That's the only place you're going to make your money, is if you charge people that are not being charged that. I mean, that's, that's a tax on everybody that buys a car or has bought a car. And if they haven't bought a more expensive car, then you're doomed.
But we have consensus to...
I feel we explore. I'm telling you.
Any other questions that the board might have right now with regard to the budget? We do have, we talked about an agenda review this afternoon, we do have another budget work session on the agenda for next Monday's board meeting. And we can certainly leave that so that if you have additional questions, in looking at the budget calendar, we'd like to be in a position, or we need to be in a position next Monday night, excuse me, after any further discussion, to set the advertised budget and tax rate. And again, that is not what necessarily the budget will be, but it's, as I call it, it's the ceiling for the tax rate and for the budget, so that we can advertise for the public hearing on April 1. If you come up, if you come up with additional questions during the week, feel free to email any of us, and we'll accumulate those and try to provide answers. And be glad to help any way we can as you go through the process.
Mr. Chair, I just have a couple of quick questions. One to your mark, actually. Just so I'm clear on your presentation, the extra state funds that go into the general fund, your second slide there, you're talking about an extra about $180,000?
That's correct.
Is that right? It's 97 from the restoration or the ending of the state flexible cuts, and then the compensation increases, and that's $180,000. And there's no strings attached to that state, that's just extra?
Okay.
All right, thank you. The second question is, I apologize again for not being here next week, I was on a business trip. One of the things, I haven't had time to go through this with a fine tooth comb, is that I was curious about, that we had talked in past years, last year especially, about doing a library study. Is that included in here? I know that would be a one-time cost, and one of the things we talked about in addition to doing the park study was maybe just using fund balance to carry that out. Is that still a possibility?
That's still a possibility, okay.
What kind of, since that would just be, would that be something we would wait until the budget's passed to discuss? Because it shouldn't be included in the budget because it's just a one-time expense? Or it doesn't have to be?
We've talked about a study. We've never formally gone out to try to find what an estimate for that would be. Again, if there's consensus among the board for us to pull that number together, that can be done, since it would be using one-time money, that can be done anytime during the process, so...
I'd at least like to know, we're talking about this, or a ballpark for a library and park study, for either of the, together?
Yeah, we've got a part, the park study's rolling.
That's rolling.
That's rolling, and we're using the PDC for that, because the PDC is doing some similar type work. I don't think the PDC's ever done a library study, that's going to be a different, probably a different consulting group.
Okay.
But if there's consensus to find that number, we can certainly do that.
I would like at least to know, I would at least like to know the numbers that we're talking about for that, and I would hope that we could reach out to Floyd County, since they're part of the regional resister with us, and not to, I'm kicking a lot of money, but...
I was going to say, that would be difficult, but it would be good to know how much it would cost. And then if we decided to pursue it, then we'd be able to say to them, hey, you know, look, because their representative has been coming to the meetings, which is, and takes an interest in it, so that's a good thing.
Okay, that's, that's a simple question, and the question that comes, spin that aside.
Yeah, but I'd at least like to start that conversation and find out how much, and ask my colleagues to at least allow the staff to gather that information.
I don't know how, probably, and as I've said a bunch of times, I'm not a big fan of studies, but at the same time, finding out a number, that's a totally different creature.
Sounds good today.
The only other thing I had, and again, I apologize, I don't think it's in here from my quick reading of budget, but one of the things that has been an ongoing question for me was about paper and the lead. And it's not, that's not factored in. Is there, I know we're still kind of waiting for...
The study came back right after the first of the year, and then Karen Edwards retired.
Yeah.
So we, we need to, that issue is pending, we need to revisit that and bring it back to the board again.
Yeah.
But it's a time to review the information, because honestly, that's, it's there, but it's not been acted on.
And I don't remember the exact numbers that Carol presented a while ago, kind of rough numbers. But we also do have an extra $180,000 right now in the budget included, so this might be an opportune time to implement something like this, because I remember it wasn't, it wasn't that much money.
It's not extra, it's in the proposed budget.
It's in the budget?
Yes. The only additional monies that were not included were the school funds.
Oh, okay.
So when you look at this, those dollars have been accounted for.
Those dollars have been accounted for, okay. I'm sorry, I was unclear my question. Anyway, so now that we're talking about the budget, we still need to revisit that, and that might be a time to do that. Do we have this, Carol, do you remember what that rough number was? That was a long time ago. I don't remember it being a huge amount of money.
I don't think it would be huge either. It was primarily for the sheriff's office.
Yeah.
Payment for overtime compensation.
Yeah. I have two numbers in my head, and I don't have any faith in either one, so I don't remember the number either.
Okay. Do we maybe have that next week?
Sure.
Even if it's just bringing back the document that we had before? Okay, thank you. That's, that's all I have right now, so probably have more questions to answer.
Okay, other questions? I guess we've done with that. We will, if the chair and vice chair agree, we will leave the proposed budget work session on for next Monday night's agenda as well. We'll bring up some of these topics, and hopefully, if you have an opportunity to develop any other questions between now and then, we'll go through that as well. Mr. Chair, the second item on the agenda for the work session this evening is a discussion of the Shawsville Middle School Fields. Thank you, Mark and Agent. This has been an item that we've had several discussions on, and if you recall, when we did our holiday planning session back in January, I said one of the things we really wanted to try to focus on this year was clarity, to try to make sure we understood clearly what the board's intentions were. This is one that is clarity also closure, because we've talked about it several times. And I, first off, just wanted to briefly remind the board how we got to where we are with this particular issue. Some time back, probably about this time last year, maybe a little later, the schools approached the county with regard to the fields at the Shawsville Middle School. The schools were in the process of getting ready to issue bids for demolition of the annex at the Shawsville Middle School. And some of the discussion as part of that demolition work was that there were some facilities on the middle school fields themselves, bleachers, light poles, that the schools didn't have a need for any further. As part of the demolition work, they wanted to know if those items could be removed, still wanted to retain the fields and the track, but to remove some of those things. And if you recall, when we had that discussion at the board level, there was concern about removing those items from that field because of the community use and the desire to keep that, those facilities there. At that point, what the school discussed was, because they didn't want the responsibility, liability of having to deal with the bleachers, the lights, and other things, they discussed, and they did, the school took an action to surplus the middle school fields there in front of the middle school to the county. And if you recall, we had a presentation several months ago about, the board has never taken an action on whether to accept those fields from the county. And further, if the county did accept those fields, what level of support were we expected to provide? We put a lot of the information that was provided to you a couple of months ago in the tab that you had this evening, under Tab A. Since that time, we also received some information from the county assessor, because one of the questions that came up was, well, if the county were to accept those fields from the schools at some point, would there be an interest in selling those fields off for future development or use? And Carol, I believe, and I'm going to ask you to help me a little bit, I believe on the middle school property, we determined that... That's the elementary school.
Yeah, there were two questions asked, one of which was what could be the estimated value for the Shawsville Elementary School, looking at the possible uses. And that first page of your tab references the value that the county assessor looked at relative to the elementary school. The second page in your tab is looking specifically at the parcels at the middle school, and estimating what that value would be on sale. And so as Tom has gone through, he said he had reviewed it, and based on his review, he was looking at somewhere around $30,000 an acre. Considering the value in the acreage, somewhere around $400,000. somewhere around $400,000, so thirty-five thousand dollars and $400,000.
Thank you. So, those are the numbers that we received from our, from our assessor regarding the value. Now, I did want to remind the board that as far as the elementary school property, what the consensus, at least staff's recollection of the consensus on the elementary school was to continue to move forward with retaining that property and developing additional fields down there once the school's demolished. We have not gone to bid or gotten any information for demolishing the school yet. Honestly, with, with the technology manufacturing building and the torque projects, I haven't asked Brian to take that on yet, but those, those projects should be wrapping up within the next 60 days, so we will go ahead and go out to bid and get a price for demolition of the elementary school so that we can move forward with that property. And then again, the, the value based on the tax assessor's review of the, of the fields at the middle school were approximately 400, about $400,000, 400, 2,500. So, as far as clarity, that I think, and I went back to my notes as well, we did ask, we had a conversation and the superintendent's here this evening too about the use of the field there at the, the middle school. And I believe outside of occasional PE just walking the track, having access to the field and then using that for emergency evacuation, that's the only uses that you guys have for the field.
And I guess to clarify that, with the other properties, there was the expectation that we were going to sell the proceeds and use those either to curtail the debt or to set aside for future construction, as I understand it. With, with this piece of property, the track and the football field, it was not, there was not an expectation that we would sell that property necessarily? Am I?
My understanding, the, the basis for the schools, and if I mispeak, just please tell me, but the basis for the schools deciding, the school board deciding to surplus that property is there were concerns from the school board about some of the liability issues related to the bleachers, the lights and other things, and those are, those were uses that the school system doesn't have a use for anymore. They don't use it for those purposes. And so, rather than, the dollars that they receive are scarce, they didn't want to have to reinvest in that. They said, you know, but if the county wants to maintain that level of use on that field, then they were willing to pass that on to the county.
Going back to the Shawsville Elementary School and it looks from, I looked at the tab earlier, it, the building is, has testa shoes and so it has no value and actually is a liability. And then the property is worth about $74,000. And I guess this is to my fellow board members, in my mind, and I know I'm looking at Todd because we weren't part of the board that one time, I think we said several times that we would set aside, we would sell these properties and set that money aside. And I guess I would want to reach out to the school board to make sure that there weren't any misunderstandings, that we would come up with funds from the county reserve to put roughly $74,000 aside as a purchase so then we were living up to our word. And, and that's the way I, I look at it before we tear it down and, and use it then for the parks and right department.
You are correct in your earlier statement stat, when we discussed this earlier, you were talking about if we sold it, put it goths and sold it some way, those money had built those schools. But we're going to retain it for expanding recreation activities. We need to come up with a figure.
To, to go back to them with?
To go back to the schools, if we plan to keep, that's it. That's about recall.
And so, I guess, are we at the point now where we are going to start reaching out to the schools and see if, and where?
What on Carol, the elementary school?
Yes, on the elementary school, not on the, not on the middle school.
The elementary school has already been surplus?
Well, it's been surplus and we've accepted that piece of property. But I was just, if I remember from more of these discussions, that had a specific surplus to us, that we were going to sell that property and that the proceeds would either be to curtail the debt or future school construction.
I don't think we, I don't think we ever, I don't think we ever stated an expected value or.
Right, no, no, not expected value, but that we were going to, that's what our plan.
Yes, any, yeah, that's correct. Well, that's, that's the state law is if, if we sell surplus school properties for any purpose, those revenues have to even go back to pay down school debt or be set aside for future school capital.
It's not a state law. I don't never, I don't understand where it's a state law says we got to pay back. People, the people of the county bought that land. The school board didn't, this group didn't, nobody bought it except the people of this county. There's nothing anywhere that says now that if it turned back over to the people of this county, that we, that they have got to pay for. Now, I think that we have given them the money and said, here's what it should be paid, what should happen to it, but that is a bad, wrong statement.
Well, I, I think the difference is if, if we sell it, so not keep it, then we do have to use those proceeds and so if we keep it for the county use, technically under most, we don't legally have to do that, but morally, if we, if we tell somebody, we're going to do this, that, that, we're putting our word out there and we need to live up to our obligations.
Well, I know, I know for sure we did, we did say that in the resolution that we adopted. I was thinking it was law, I'm going to double check this.
If it is, I want somebody to check.
I haven't looked at it a while, but there is language in there that talks about that. The way it works is that, I think, double check, but I think the statute says something about if they give it to you to sell, then you can then agree, that they can ask for the money back and from the proceeds and the board can say yea or nay on that. If the board says yea, then that money can only be used for capital and large maintenance projects that, that comes under capital. But I'll, I'll double check that, but there is something in the state. And the resolution did ask for, if it is sold, to be able to use that money in that burden.
Yeah, and I do agree with you that if it's, if, if the county decides to retain it for whatever reason, there doesn't have, there doesn't have to be compensation.
But you know, the wise thing to do, whether it's here, there, or anywhere else, is if you don't hold on to that property there now, whether it's school bought over and done to it, or whether we hold it on work with them.
Which piece are you talking about?
The elementary school.
You're talking about the elementary school.
No, if we do not hold on to that, then that's assuming, and that's a big assumption,
that you're never going to need any additional schooling for your schools that are already set.
I don't think you could go to school.
No, I just.
Couldn't build a school in a way?
I don't think it'd be wise.
You're not talking about that piece of property.
We're talking about the elementary.
I'm talking about the elementary school, not, not the elementary, but the.
Okay, because I, I.
We're talking about the elementary school.
Elementary school.
Not, not, not the middle school. The middle, yeah, the middle school is what I was talking about, we segue over to the elementary school for a minute because again, the elementary school's been surplus, the county has received it. Consensus from the board was that we were wanting, the county was going to retain that property, take the old school down and use that for future parks and recreation development. And that, that was the consensus. The one piece that we needed to get as far as clarity and closure, I guess, was the discussion that Supervisor Tuck brought up about as we move forward with the removal of the elementary school and the future redevelopment of that land, does the board, is there an obligation, does the board believe there's an obligation to provide any funding to the schools or retain that property?
I agree with Chris, I think it's a good faith part of the board to about this, this great idea that we have to put that into reserve for future capital needs for the schools, seventy, seventy-four thousand, seven hundred dollars, seventy-four thousand.
And I, and I guarantee you that I absolutely agree with that. But it's the other school that I'm going to look at.
Anybody have any estimates on the demolition of the elementary school, any, all part figures? The, the number that Brian mentioned, Mr. Chair, I want to say between 200 and 250,000, it may not be that much. It's a one-level school, there's not, to our knowledge, we'll have to do an assessment, there's not, we don't have the asbestos and lead issues in that building, we're doing a lot of the older buildings. And I, I think that's the number that he and I talked about, but I honestly can't remember.
It'll probably cost you about as much to refurbish or to, not to refurbish, but it costs as much to turn that building down and make it all flat ground down there. It will cost as much there as it's worth.
I think it'll probably cost more.
More than that.
Most likely be more against it.
And we have, we have left the power on there just to keep some very minimal temperature controls, to keep pipes from bursting or to keep it from getting too hot. But that's running us about $1,500 a month and what Brian and I have talked about is as soon as he can, going out and getting estimates so we can come back to you guys to get that thing taken down and get that off the books.
Because I've still got another, I don't know, with the acre to, somewhere between eight and two acres of land that I can get donated to have for parks and, maybe even a bigger piece.
We've had some, we've had a request for use of the building too, but again, we, we are not maintaining anything in that building other than just making sure stuff doesn't get broken. And so, we, we're not allowing any use, it's really not, I haven't been in the building in a couple of months, but it amazes me how quickly those buildings start to go down as soon as you quit using them. If you want an example of that, you look at the old Blackwell High School too, it's just a solid park.
So with, with what I'm looking at, so with say putting about $75,000 for the land and between 250 and 275, would be roughly about, yeah, about 350,000 dollars.
I have a couple of questions. Is it, if it's worth 75,000 dollars or whatever, you're saying put that aside for the school projects?
Yeah, for capital, like we.
Plus, we pay you the dirt school debt?
Yeah, the, yes, and the, let's say 75, the 75,000 would be the county's reimbursement to the schools for the land that we're keeping to, to do future development on. The money we spend to take the school down and, and level will basically be an investment in, in recreation to get some additional fields that are constructed down there, so if, yes, we're going to spend money to tear the building down.
Yes, spend more money than it's worth.
Yes. Yeah, I mean, the, yes, we are, the other option.
We're not going to spend more money than it's worth, we're going to spend, no, it would be, if we try to refurbish it, it would cost us more than just tearing it down. So, we're taking the less expensive option by tearing the thing down, making it ready for the schools. I'm sorry, making it ready for parks and.
Right, and I don't see industry really seeking out that, if you're surrounded by a flood zone, let's say we wanted to put it up for sale and not develop the ball fields. I, I have been out there with my son where the river was running and you couldn't get to the school because you were cut off, you couldn't go across the road. And so, I don't know that many industries, and, and that's what, I guess the only thing, I don't.
Plus, the property would have to be rezoned in the residence now, that, that would be an interesting rezoning.
So, I, I just don't see us being able to sell this building and making money off of it to be able to turn over to the schools. I may be wrong, but this, the Elston effect was right on 460, it's convenient, you could see how commuters might, and Shawville, I guess ended up buying it, they could see that they could make money off that. I just see the school as being, even if we auction it, it's not going to bring the money that we're going to want to see. And we're going to want ball fields down there for the kids, so, because we've already invested within two ball fields.
The kind of things that are wrong down there, one is the PSA, the sewage plant that's right adjoining on the rear, that poor kids, they, they got the very least ones of the kids out there playing. And, and it's, it's not real nice place to be playing ball or not doing anything else. So, you know, it just.
Are you saying that there's not a demand to build houses next to a sewage treatment plant?
That would be, in a flood zone.
Yeah. There's only two acres, not. That's, that's why the staff's regulation all along. To build and tame that property for recreation because there's really not much of anything else you can do.
If the bill was coming down, I mean, just, why are we paying people $100 a month if you buy this thing on?
Well, because we didn't have an absolute gas to tear the building down and that's one thing I wanted to, when I said closure, I wanted to make sure tonight we all agreed. Because we didn't, you know, we didn't want things to break or create additional damage to the building because one thing as well is when we put it out to bid for demolition, you know, I don't know what value the materials are in the building. Sometimes you can get a demolition contractor that'll give you a pretty low bid because he's going to recycle a lot, a lot of stuff from the building. So, we didn't want to mess, we didn't want the building to get messed up before we tore it down. I know that sounds crazy, but that's.
That's right, that's what happened to the old, old Blackwell Middle School, they used to spend so much money on it, the money got tight, then they cut it out of the budget and then it just went on and down.
Mr. Chair, I guess before we drop back up 460 to the middle school property, is there, can I see if there's a consensus to determine a set amount of money to set aside for the schools and then have consensus to go ahead and have Brian start getting estimates you're taking the building down?
I don't think so. I mean, it ain't going to happen if you don't start.
We know that 75 is what it makes it worth.
That's based on the, our tax assessor's estimate of, of the land. Now, you know, we could hire three appraisal firms and probably get two or three different numbers, but.
And that appraisal still costs you $5,000.
I just, I just got a problem spending more money on something that worked.
Well, and I guess Todd, I'm looking at this, and I don't think you were initially, Gary and I.
I don't have to deal with it for 30 years.
Right, and we put on, a couple of years back, we looked at maybe even putting the animal facility there. That vote didn't pass and that wasn't something that was accepted, so there's not a lot of things to do with it. And if we sell it, we might get, let's say we got $100,000 dollar property, as is, the way it is. Then we're going to be looking, we've got ball fields that we've already built and that are in existence. And so, you're, you're, yes, you're, you're going against it, so we're, we would be looking for a place to have ball fields. And we just spent 400,000 out towards Ryder, out at the Sheeler, for that Sheeler park, that's not in Ryder, but it's, it's out at the Rappert exit. And, and so, when you start looking at flat pieces of land in this country around here that are easily accessible and the like, it makes it a lot more difficult. And so, I know what we're saying about the school board to me and giving that money, but that follows down to me is, is trying to, to live up to our word. Technically, do I know that we're going to end up spending more money on this thing? What you're saying, yes, we are, but we're getting something back for it. And the assessed value on the building, if it was, if we were going to use it as what, 400,000?
Yeah, but we'd have to spend half that.
If we were going to, so the building, I guess, has some value. I, I know, I know what you're saying.
If, what you're saying is if we went out to buy a piece of land.
If, what you're saying is, if we went out to buy a piece of land for Parks and Rec, we would be paying a lot more than a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for it. So in the long run, it pays to take what you've got and work with that.
Two hundred and eighty thousand dollars plus seven thousand dollars, that's three hundred thousand.
No, I'm just thinking that you.
Ball field, seventy-five for the land or a ball field?
Yeah, but if you were to buy some land, it would be pretty tough to do that, and, and discount down there.
And then trying to get the zoning change for that piece of property to make it back, you're gonna have two acres that you're gonna be able to build on. I don't, I forgot what it cost us to tear down the Chelsall Way Fett, but was it a hundred and eighty? Is that the number? I'm thinking it's a hundred and eighty, but.
I don't think, I don't think it was that much, it was. I'm thinking less than a hundred.
Okay, maybe I'm.
And as I'm sitting here, I'm, two, two hundred and fifty thousand, I think, is high for tearing it down, it'd probably be less than that, but I'd rather tell you two fifty than to be a hundred and to tell you a hundred and fifty, two fifty. But, but again, we haven't even gone out to price that yet because we just had, I said clarity and closure. We need to get closure and move this one on, and then that way we can talk about what we're gonna do with the middle school as well, so. I, I mean, I understand your concerns. Okay, one, two, three, four, five, six, so you got consensus to. We'll develop a resolution to appropriate seventy-five thousand to the reserve to cover the land. And then we'll get Brian working on the number for demolition, and I'll get back to you. Let's, let's drive back up the street to the middle school field. The, the two questions I guess we need resolved are, there was, there was discussion at the last meeting, and I, I don't know if it was consensus, but there was discussion that the board would accept the conveyance of the property. But then there was a lot of discussion about, were we gonna turn it into more of a community athletic field use? Or were we going to move forward with trying to sell the property? And that's where staff had a lot of confusion and questions, so.
Craig, is that, is that the file right there, can we maybe put the picture up?
Yeah.
With the.
Okay, but did Mr. Boyle, did you ever get in contact with Mr. Boyle about the soccer thing he was talking about?
I did, well, we've traded, we've traded voice messages he was asking about the elementary school. And, and I told him at this point we'd have to progress, so.
One of the questions I've had from Ms. Blackburn was, were the schools asking us to, to maintain the field but keep it for evacuation purposes? Because when she made that presentation, and it, it's been several months ago, I recall her saying that, that the only purpose that they would need the field was for evacuation purposes from the schools. And so I guess, and, and I guess maybe now occasional recreation situations, is that correct? Am I, do I recall correctly?
Do you want me to answer?
If you don't mind, thank you, appreciate you sticking around for this.
The school board wanted to demolish the structures on that parcel of the property because they are maintenance and a liability issued for the school system. So when we were unable to reach agreement that the county would support the removal of the structures, then our offer was for you to take the property and maintain it. That's what you want, to be a community property. It's not appropriate for commercial development, it would not be appropriate for new residential development because of its very close proximity to the actual school and the playing fields. The school, the area that we wanted to demolish the structures is used for two reasons by the school. It's used as a, a point of evacuation when we do evacuate the building and go out. And it's also used occasionally by the P P classes to walk the track. And we would have had it flat, level, the track would have remained, and it would have still been accessible for the evacuation site for the group of students, about three hundred, two hundred and fifty that attend the school day. So it's like a, a conflict in terms of use. County, meaning board supervisors, from my perspective, wanted to maintain those recreational structures despite the fact that they were no longer needed by the school system and carry a liability cost.
But we're all the kids walk around the track if it's no longer available.
Well, my, my request to the supervisors was that we be allowed to continue to have use of that track and that we could use it as a point of evacuation. Because I thought you wanted to preserve the structures and use them for the community, not that you wanted to sell it and turn it into commercial or other residential usage.
And when you're saying the structures, the bleachers, the lights, there's a concession stand.
And a ticket booth.
And a ticket booth.
And tennis courts.
And the tennis courts, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, one question, if, if you don't have his words, the kids won't back away.
The school board's request to the supervisors was that the supervisors allow the students and the school to continue to have access for an evacuation point and for walking that track.
That was, yeah, that was part of the conveyance, if, if the county were to accept it, yeah, that.
Just one question, do y'all need it, I mean?
We, we are happy to keep the property. We don't wanna pay to keep up the lights and the bleachers and the concession stand and the ticket booth. We wanted to level those and make it more applicable to our needs. However, there appears to be some community need for those structures. But I don't need to pay to keep them up for the community, I need to pay my limited maintenance dollars to take care of the parts of the facility that are actually used by the school.
Yeah, and, you know, the good thing about this whole thing is, and we kinda went over this back last time when we were talking about, is the fact that we can have someone that will keep it up, will keep the grass mowed, will keep everything hunky-dory, the, the tennis courts back up to somewhat, something that they at least can play on. And they will do this, guaranteeing the schools will have a place at any time that they want it to go and evacuate to or to, if they wanna have a, get down the side, they wanna have a softball game or whatever, they, they can get that, anything that they want, that they will give this group a notice of. Except, you know, the notice wouldn't be needing to, need to be their own, something for evacuation or something. Just if it was gonna be a full school thing that, they just decided, we'd like to have a picnic over there or whatever, that, they would need some, sometime, you know, week, two weeks or ten days or maybe two days, you know, you'd have to call them and, and see at that point in time, but we would have somebody there that would do that. And I say we, because I consider myself part of Eastern Montgomery County, not part of these people that are going to Mountain Valley, you know, going to come in and do that. And Mountain Valley has a very good record with the county as being somebody that will do what they say they will do, they will do it on time, and they will do it better than what they, what they thought they was gonna do when they started down. So with that said, you know, it can be kept up, and it can be fixed into five-year or ten-year or twenty-year or fifty-year lease, and they will accept either one. Now, the thing that we need to know is, and, and the big thing that's, that's always riding on your shoulders is, what if we need that for a school eventually or something, to that nature? Well, because it would be broke up, in my estimation, to break it on five-year intervals, either party having the right to withdraw on a five-year interval, and, and you've got it to where the, if it needs to be a school, it can be a school in a hurry.
Fourteen, I'm sorry, eleven point five.
Well, you know, last week, or, or two weeks ago, Mr. Brown made a suggestion that we actually put the restures club there on the, or the old building that they just tore down. And I thought that was a, a great use of means that they are leaving them upon any.
That would be, you know, that would be a, a future site, it might be fifteen years before it's, it's built or something like this, but what I understand now, where they said at the end of the flood plain, they can't expand or do anything, the structure's getting old, and, and they have the meetings upstairs, some of their members, it's a struggle to get up to the meetings and so forth. And when you look at this, and, and getting back to, people take care of it. Yuri, what I think about too is, people may take care of it and so forth, but when light poles need to be replaced, where are they gonna come and get them replaced, to us? If the roofs need to be put on, the shelters and things down there that's, that's in the ticket booth or whatever that was mentioned, they're gonna come to us.
I don't think so, Bill, but let me say, I know that the, the concession stand?
Yeah.
It wasn't built by us, it was built by the citizens down there.
Built by citizens, but it's a piece of property that's became ours, something like that.
Ever out of it, those, those poles down there, it didn't become us. I got the money up to have every, every nickel of it, to put every one of them in.
But they're not gonna sue you if a pole, pole fallen on somebody that's inadequate, they're gonna come after the county regardless who put it up there.
I don't see where they're inadequate.
Marty, can we write any agreement, if we were to agree with something down in Valley, that they would assume all maintenance costs future and ongoing, including replacement as needed, as determined by county inspectors, building inspectors and stuff like that? So we could write that agreement? And they would, they would assume all liability as well, in case, God forbid, something happened?
Yeah, and, and.
They would insure it.
They would, they would be responsible for insuring it?
If nothing else, if, if it happens, if they have to put it on or take them up, but in the first year or two, they probably not gonna have the money. So they should have the right to be able to take them down and leave them down until they have to like.
That's fine.
I mean, I think they're, they'll agree with about anything we do, but you got to get across the first step first.
Well, the first step, I guess, is for us to accept.
Yeah, what I'm, what I'm hearing is, the first step would be, we need to, we need to have a resolution to accept the school board's recommendation of conveyance and offer to accept the property. And then the second step is to develop an agreement with Mountain Valley, charitable foundation for the maintenance, maintenance operation and upkeep of the property with the understanding that the schools have access to the property as well.
Am I remembering? Yeah, I remember, I remember in pressure, we have a separate agreement for the baseball field.
Baseball field, yeah, we own that.
We own that, but it's being maintained by, is it, is it day spring?
It's day spring, what, what we're doing, just to give you an update in that, we, we got, we have that property, we have the old high school property, we have the interior and the track and the lacrosse is going to be used. We have the softball field that Dixie, Rec Leagues and some travel teams that are in our community want to use it. And then the baseball field is actually, it looks like it's gonna be used by the high school again because the new high school field is, it's taking a little while to mature grass-wise. And so what, what we've done is, we've, we've got groups that are entering into field use agreements to actually control those and be in charge of maintenance and take care of all the property. And also, if any other groups wanna get on it, they're gonna actually go through them. So the one group that's doing the baseball field at the high school, Build High School's brewing a baseball LLC. It's a group of parents that have been maintaining that field for a few years now anyway, and so they're, they'll be insuring it, they'll be putting in all the work and labor, we're not spending anything other than to get to use it for free. If the community wanted, the community team wants to use it, they'll go through them and not charge them. However, we, we did say they could have tournaments there for outside teams to charge them, but it's gotta be a rate that's intended to recoup the maintenance cost, not, not a big deal. And with this field, we're sending the same use agreement to, it was sent to day spring, the same terms, that they, they will be in charge of this. Anyone else wants to use it, they're the ones who can schedule it, they're in charge of maintaining it, we're not charging anything.
Or additional insurance, so they have to cover the chocolate.
Yeah, they, they have to do insurance makeups, but the thing is, there's, it's a, it's an annual thing. We're not promising anything more than that season, but it's, it, it's a written, we can both agree to mutually extend it. There's an out where, if we're gonna sell that property and we can terminate within thirty days, other than that, we can only terminate at the end of the season, end of the season's November fifteenth, that's what's.
And that, and that's actually to the county's benefit because, especially with the old high school property, that, that property was fairly expensive to keep maintained and mowed, and these guys have said, look, if you'll let us use it, we'll keep it up. And I wanna, I wanna thank Marty because Marty's got enough on his plate as well, but Marty's basically drafted these agreements with these outside agencies to, to be able to do that, and that's.
Well, it's important, 'cause I mean, I, I know almost all these people that are doing this, and, and the schools have had a great help with those fields too, but they're, they're used every day.
And we just, we, the Parks and Recreation staff, you know, there was some discussion about, you know, trying to run it off the Parks and Recreation, but you, I mean, they have more enough time to keep it up with the fields, we already are responsible for programming and maintaining, so basically, just like with that baseball field, saying, all right, day spring, that, that's your field. We have contract with you, you maintain it, you keep it up, you insure us and.
Day spring, says Mark.
Yeah.
Yeah, day of day of.
Okay, and something, just, just for knowledge, they only use that field about three months of the year. They don't come in the spring once, they, they're, that's the church group, and that's what they want is, is it, or is, matter of fact, they're down and playing tonight, you know, when I come up though, they were out there getting it. So that's something that someone else could get on there as a writer and, and help make that thing really shine.
I would be okay with pursuing this out for the, the other part of the property that we're talking about right now. Is there a way that we could write in that the county parks would have priority for scheduling that?
Yeah, which one are you talking about, the baseball field?
No, the, the.
The track.
Field, yeah, or, or the schools, for example, or something.
Yeah. Well, no, but sometimes the schools are gonna leave it, so they would, they would have a priority and then the county, and then. Yeah, I mean, you could write in saying that, that they'll, every year, it's whatever time would be appropriate, contact Parks and Recreation, do you have a user for scheduling?
Yeah.
Because it's all community use, that's the, Frank was using, so I don't see a way to add any problems. I know the lacrosse club uses that field.
Lacrosse, and that's some of those came out of Ronup and Zidon, different places all around.
Yeah, we got a, a request from lacrosse to use the old middle school, Blacksmith Middle School field too, but our position on the old middle school field, unless y'all tell me otherwise, has been, we're actively marketing that, it's currently up, the back is under contract, and we're not moving that up for public use.
We spent a lot of money getting that down, looking the way it does.
And it hadn't been, they're talking about the old Bill Brown Stadium area, and that's all been torn down, that's, that hadn't been operated as a, it's been gone anymore.
Have some real liability issues.
Like, ongoing. My dad's coach, not this Bill Brown, but.
Um, so, when, did we have some discussion about, nobody's told me, that we didn't have enough people in Parks and Rec to schedule things on that property, or did I dream that?
No, we don't, so I'm doing it.
But that's the thing about it, we didn't, we didn't want.
Well, Nancy's fault.
Yeah, people calling Parks and Recreation to schedule events on there, or see can we get the field, because it just expands their workload and trying to.
But if we do this like we're talking about, that's what would happen.
Contact them.
Right.
No, but who are they gonna contact, Mountain Valley?
Yeah, and that's what we've done with these other fields, we're saying, through a baseball, you need to, if, if someone wants to get out of there, like, would you take a baseball club place or something? Then they need to go through Broom, not through me, but if there's a problem, then I'll mediate.
Gotcha.
Same thing with the softball and the interior. This one be, maybe, this one may end up being a little bit different, because they want to use it.
Wasn't he talking about the baseball field?
Yeah.
Yeah, that baseball field up there, they, he told me that three months will absolutely get him.
Yeah, he's the fall.
And, and in the fall, they just work on the field, but they work on the field. You're around, were they in there or not, so?
Well, and, and I think the camp, at least I think the position should be, if they're expending their energy and effort to maintain and keep that field out, if he wants to have a tournament there or whatever, that's up to him. I mean, that's absolutely.
Charge.
Yeah, that's opposite, so again, he's maintaining the fields for us, which saves us money, so.
Yeah, and he should have that right as long as it doesn't hinder any other citizens that might, or group of citizens that may want to go down there, having our.
Mr. Chair, I just, what I'm hearing on the middle school site, I just wanna make sure so we can have clarity and closure, as I said, is that if the board is willing to accept the conveyance of the field from the schools, the second step would be to receive title for the property so that it can become the property of the county. And while all that's going on, we can also begin to develop an agreement with the Mountain Valley Charitable Foundation for the operation, maintenance and upkeep of the field.
Is that consensus?
I guess, I think Carol brings up a good point, should we just start discussions in Mountain Valley, make sure we can actually negotiate an agreement before we take it?
Is the law going to be theirs?
It will be theirs.
No, I mean, right now.
Right now, it's the school.
They told me as late as this.
We haven't.
I mean, if we accept it.
It makes sense, it makes sense to get, uh, a consensus from them, that they're gonna do this before we say, yeah, we want it. We might get it and they say, no, I'm gonna wanna take it.
Might want to go ahead and get the, the actual paper and just don't turn it in yet, you know?
Understanding this is the term.
Yeah.
You know, they might wanna negotiate with it, or something to agree.
Oh, they're gonna like to negotiate.
Thank, thank you for your help with that, I know, we, we try not to bring stuff back to you guys any more than we need to, but that one's been, one that's been a little bit confusing.
If we're gonna, um, I hate to complicate things, but being that we just put seventy-five thousand dollars into school transfers for another property, we were talking about fair use, transferring that money for this property since now, this, this is also saying with Parks and Rec.
Yeah, but they're using.
But they're, they are asking us to not sell this, that's the reason I asked that question, they're saying, don't sell this piece of property, we still need it. They're saying, the, the Shelsa Elementary School, sell this piece of property and, and give us the money.
That's what I'm understanding, they still need it, why are they giving it to us?
Because of the buildings, like, their idea was that, yeah, they just did not wanna maintain the holdings, their liability. Well, the, the community doesn't want it.
They're on the ground, so they don't have any buildings back.
Yeah, they wanna have a corner.
The concession stand, the bleachers.
They could have that, no, we don't have that.
And the duck.
Well, the school's.
Yeah, that's right, we do have the duck. And the tennis courts.
And I know, Gary gets us up today, what if you need to build another, another school, I'm thinking like, if we need a school in the next fifteen, twenty years, we can support planning down there already.
I'll tell you something else that was brought up the other day, and, and let me just, this is worth running by everybody. And, and Dr. Smith down there is the one that, that brought it up, uh, on one of my rides over to the tech, what's it play about? Where they just got through tearing down the old school. He would like to take that area and have a garden, one of these gardens where you assign areas.
Community garden.
Community garden.
What, where?
They took the building out.
Oh, you mean that, that little piece that's.
Yeah, you know, they actually put good topsoil back on top of that thing. And he said, you know, enough, four people around here, we're gonna quick to sign them, a place to get a garden and a building.
Well, that would be up to Mountain Valley, wouldn't it? If they were to maintain it, they, it's, that's their decision.
Well, and I hadn't heard that brought in to Mountain Valley, but that would be, if that's Mountain Valley, certainly would, would be a good thing they could make their own decision if they want to.
That'd be a good idea to, to.
It, it helps on these older folks that don't have, live in parks and.
And then helping around the gardens and things, help get that cleaned. I would deep up to the.
That would bring up value. That'll back.
Are we, uh, okay on the properties?
Yeah, I think we are.
Make a motion, have a go at a work session.
Second, third.
Have a motion, second, go to a work session, third, please call roll.
Supervisor King, Supervisor Biggs.
Aye.
Supervisor Perkins is absent for the vote. Supervisor Tuck.
Aye.
Supervisor Gabriel.
Aye.
Supervisor Creed.
Aye.
Chair Brown.
Aye.
Six eyes, I don't know how you count a nip one.
Just an absence. Just absence, left, left of the table, temporarily.
Next order of business is to go into closed meeting, being resolved, or supervisors hereby introduce a closed meeting for the purpose of discussing the following, section two point two, three, seven, one, one, in discussion, or consideration of acquisition of real property for public purpose, or the disposition of publicly held property for discussion in an open meeting with a personal effect, the bargaining position, or negotiating strategy of the public body. And that would be Allegheny Spring Green Box site, go have a motion, please. Second, no motion, the second, go to a closed meeting, but the clerk please call roll.
Supervisor Biggs.
Aye.
Supervisor Perkins is absent. Supervisor Tuck.
Aye.
Supervisor Gabriel.
Aye.
Supervisor Creed. Supervisor King.
Aye.
Chair Brown.
Aye.
Six eyes, we're in a work session.